Waterloo City Council, uh, meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
There.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Wilder. Mr. Foyce.
Here. All right. And we have, uh, Councilwoman Creighton Smith on line and Councilwoman Wilder will not be in attendance, uh, tonight. Can you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Uh, leading our pledge tonight is outlarge Councilmember Steve Simon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, as well as the minutes of the July 7th, 2025, regular council session as proposed.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. First up, uh, we have public comments. Uh, you have, this is your opportunity. You get three minutes to talk about non-agenda related items. If you would please state your name and address.
I'm Mary Potter, 1416 West Fourth Street. I'm a trustee of the grout. So I have to, of course, talk about the grout. Uh, one of the things that we have recently had was a sip and salute. That was last week and it was a lot of fun. And so I'm going to let you know all the things that are coming up. We're going to have trivia nights again. I don't know if any of you appeared at the last time we had it, but it's just a lot of fun. In December, we're going to have Christmas at the Renssler House, and this is on Saturday, December 6th. And you get to, uh, go through all the lovely older homes that are part of the grout district. And there'll be cookies and all that good stuff and some carolers, so you'll enjoy that. And the night before that, on Friday night, we are having a gala. And this will be a time you can put on your glitzy clothes and come down and celebrate, have some good food, have some, um, music from some, I think maybe the Metropolitan, Metropolitan Corral will be there. But we're going to do, um, all kinds of silent auctions and things too, so put that on your calendar. And then Benjamin Miller, I don't know if you know Benjamin, but he's the creator of all the things that are in the planetarium. And he's very outstanding. Have you all been to the planetarium for his shows? They are really outstanding. So he'll be coming up with some other shows between now and the end of the year. Um, we're going to have monthly reports, and I think most of you get that on email or something, do you? And you see the, the different signs and they hand them out. So if you haven't already purchased a membership, you of all people should be having one. I mean, this is bringing people to the city of Waterloo. And these are not the things that we can overlook. These are things that are very important to attracting tourism. So I would really strongly suggest you all need to think about buying a membership, even if you buy a single one. Right, Rob? Yes. He's one of the people that has a membership, so I talked to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Aaron Stacey Roberts, 411 Almond. As I had mentioned, uh, probably three years ago now, first time I mentioned a public safety issue here in Waterloo is being unaddressed because of benign neglect, failure to act, and some of the people in law enforcement, some of them are in law enforcement, and some of them in the judicial system are playing a part in a very much ongoing corruption in order to cover up what was first, an optional life insurance policy for salaried employees. John Deere Life Insurance Company, Jacksonville, Illinois, which was on my father. The second case was the one that I mentioned in Urbendale, Iowa, which affected my daughter, uh, through a sexual assault and sending a message to me about the half a million dollars. And when I was mentioning the half a million dollars was a $250,000 life insurance policy. Then the stocks that my father also has, a salaried employee, had at John Deere and Company. Us as a community and those from past up until present day, I'm going to exclude myself because I'm up here fighting for the young children that I have seen grown up, grow up, uh, from 28 years ago till today. Now they have children that are grown and how their lives have been affected. And some of them are dead, some of them have been in and out of penitentiary. Some of them are people that we see, uh, in these meetings, and their children are still hung, uh, stuck on dope from stuff that goes back there. Like I say, I'm until with spiritual warfare. These kids are starting to wake up. And I, as I tell them in the streets, they're very much due. And with that being said, if there's damages, there's dues. And people here, whole lives have been adversely affected by failure to act with law enforcement, past and present. And it's really time, if you're talking about bringing people to Waterloo, a safe Waterloo, is to address this issue. Because I have no plans on going to, I'm, I'm real serious. I got brainwashed at Price Laboratory School by Jimmy the Cricket, who said he wanted to be, live to be 103. So I'm 60 now and I got plenty of time to keep doing this. But other people don't react the way I'm, I do. You have a guy that just ran down a whole bunch of people last night, and he probably didn't have any, uh, any pressure on him. So this is what's going on with this machine. I'm not the only victim, and the next one may not react the way that I am. I suggest that you guys pay attention to what I'm saying and contact whoever you have to. I don't know if any of you have reached out to the FBI, the CIA, or whoever covers this type of stuff, when it's public corruption with big business involved. You need to deal with this for the people of Waterloo. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
David Dyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. Um, I have a dog. I got a letter about the dog not being registered, which, uh, there was very little in tidbits thrown out here and there as to when it was going to be effective. I looked on the computer one time and, uh, the licensing wasn't available yet. Uh, but when the dog licensing was first considered, uh, the police department, then it was the fire department, was to be, uh, administering this. Now we're out of state. DocuPeck, an out-of-state company, now administers the dog licensing. How much of a fee do they keep to do this? Uh, also, I wonder, does that fee, $15, does that include the dog park? That was indicated originally that it includes the dog park, which we used to pay more than that with the licensing and the dog park, and the dog park got some money to maintain. The letter I received says that they will, this will make licensing your dog, your pet, easier and more, um, rewarding. I can't see it's easier. When you go down to the city clerk down here like we used to do, pay your money, get your tag, walk out the door. Now, if you have a computer, which I do, but I, I went ahead and mailed it in because I got the letter, but you got to go online, you got to go through all that process. How many older people have, have that? Older people don't understand computers. I barely do, and I'm old. But anyway, uh, you're making it more difficult for people to license their dog. So then you can go find them because they didn't license their dog. Uh, have you got the vets on board to tell you who has all got, uh, gotten a rabies shot to expand that? I feel strongly that it is just another way to hidden tax the citizens of Waterloo. I don't think we need to pay an out-of-state when we've got people here on staff that could do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Hey, City Council and City staff. Before I even tell you who I am, I just want to tell you, I had hoped to be Mary from the grout up here because she sets the bar this high as far as like talking about her organization, and she inspires us. So anyway, uh, my name is Star Rup, and I have the privilege of serving as the immediate past president for the Main Street Waterloo Board. And so I'm here tonight, uh, oh, sorry, 512 Mulberry Street, on behalf of our terrific board and our Main Street Waterloo staff and liaisons, thank you Councilman Simon, uh, to take a moment to share a few quick and exciting updates. So we have some new businesses happening in Waterloo that we're really excited about, clear, uh, indication of our efforts and the collaboration with other entities to see growth and revitalization in downtown Waterloo. So a couple of new things. Conamore Bakery. Any of you been there? Like, interact, please, because nobody likes to talk in public, like, interact. Yeah, you've been there. Thank you. Okay, so Conamore Bakery now open at 331 East Fourth Street. Conamore is a new locally owned business bringing a sweet touch to downtown. They specialize in fresh, handcrafted pastries and baked goods inspired by Latin flavors and family tradition. It's already a community favorite, indicated by a raise of hand, right? Uh, vibrant addition to East Fourth Street. So we have Good Game. Anybody been there? Any gamers? There we go. Thank you. Uh, Good Game is a family-owned and operated game store that recently opened its doors. They offer multiple TCG cards, uh, and accessories, including Pokemon, Magic the Gathering, et cetera. They also offer Warhammer. That's probably why you're there, right? Warhammer? I don't know. 40K models and accessories, D and D, that's Dungeon and Dragons, I know that part at least, and more. A welcoming and inclusive space for all ages. And then coming soon, and I'm super excited about this, the Grow Room is opening within the next month. Uh, they will be an organic and wellness boutique. Uh, this new venture will offer sustainable gardening supplies, indoor plants, and wellness products with focus on healthy living and eco-conscious practices, unique addition to our business mix in downtown Waterloo. So I for one is super excited about that one. So obviously, this is more than just economic growth. This really represents a whole lot of people working collaboratively to enhance our downtown Waterloo. So I'm excited about these new ventures. I hope I'll see you there. Uh, please join me, the rest of the Main Street Waterloo Board liaisons and staff in celebrating these. And thank you for your ongoing support and service.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to make a comment? Going a second time.
Mr. Chair.
Good catch. Counsel. Any comments from counsel?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you again. Um, the only thing that I have is this coming Saturday is the final Saturday of the month, which means, uh, Mr. Bozen and I will be ho- holding our Ward One and Ward Two office hours. So please feel free to stop by at noon, the Ridgeway Coffee, um, Ridgway Sidecar Coffee. I will get that right one day. Um, and just come chat with us, learn what's going on in the city if you have any questions. Please don't feel like you have to come and sit there for an hour. If you want to come, ask us a question, get a coffee and leave, please do. Um, but it is at noon this Saturday at Sidecar Coffee on Ridgway. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments, counsel? All right. I'd like to make, um, I'd like to make a, during this time, a motion. Um, and I would like to make a motion to reconsider items seven and 12 from the July 7th meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to reconsider items. They would not be reconsidered today. They would be reconsidered at our next council meeting.
Correct.
So, yep. Okay. Um, Madam Clerk, roll call vote on this, please.
Mr. Bozen?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
What is that mean?
I'm going to take that as a yes. Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Oh.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes. Okay. I'll take a motion to close public comments.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to pose, close public comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Consent agenda, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, um, with the addition of bills, 1A1 bills payment in the amount of $5,63,034.08 for July 14th, 2025. And then for July 21st, 2025, in the amount of $10,760,784.11.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to discuss 11 and 12 separately.
Okay, so we will poll, um, number 11 and number 12. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes. Mr. Bozen?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve change order number eight with Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Ryanbeck, Iowa, for net increase of $25,236.39 in conjunction with the FY 2022 Park Avenue Bridge Replacement Project, contract number 1013 DOT, contract number BRM dash CHBP dash 8155, parentheses, 771, parentheses, dash NB dash 07, authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number 12 is a motion to approve change order number seven with Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Ryanbeck, Iowa, and a net increase of $45,302,32 dollars and 12 cents in conjunction with the FY 2022 Park Avenue Bridge Replacement Project, contract number 1013 DOT, contract number BRM dash CHBP dash 8155, parentheses, 771, parentheses, dash NB dash 07, authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
All right. Excuse me. We have a motion and a second. Discussion, Mr. Bozen.
Thank you. And I would just, would like, uh, Mr. Knutson to, to, just to talk about this and how this came about because they, they look, when you read the verbiage or the documentation associated with it, it appears the same documentation, and then, and then we've got one for $25,000, one for $45,000. So we're looking at $70,000 in change orders for, to, to install similar light poles than what the city uses, at least what I've read. And I'm curious on how we got to this and why they weren't spec'd that way to begin with.
Right.
Mr. Knutson. City engineer, you're exactly right, Mr. Bozen. These are to install the city standard, uh, light poles on both the Park and 11th Street Bridge. 11th Street is the cheaper one. Park Avenue is the more expensive one for the dollar amounts. Um, when we bid this project way back when, we were unable to, I shouldn't say we weren't unable to, we were not, we couldn't get our poles installed or put into the bid at the time. So after the fact, then we were able to change order them and working with the DOT, and that's what you have before you, so that they match all the rest of the str- light poles within the city, so that when something happens to them, they can be swapped out easily, so that, uh, Public Works has one light pole that they use throughout the entire city.
So a question is in the, the cheaper one, number 11, should that read 2022 11th Street Bridge Project? Because it reads Park Avenue Bridge Project.
It should read just the way it is because everything was put together under one city contract.
Okay. Now, that's what confused me.
It is a little me- it is a little messy, but everything is one, one city contract, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
So when we originally bid this, was it a bid process and then the add-on afterwards? Is that, whose error was that? Was that an error?
It was nobody's error. It was just at the time, we were, we really weren't able to bid it, um, with the city poles because it was a DOT letting, and DOT basically requires generic bid items. So once it was bid, then we were able to work with the DOT to change order these specific poles into, uh, the city contracts, so that we only have one light pole to keep track of.
So that wasn't thought of before?
That's DOT process, so there isn't much we could do about it at the time.
But we, did we plan on not having lights on the bridges?
No, we, they were bid with a generic pole, which means the contractor could have picked a light pole that was from California that they use, or New York, or wherever.
So the poles that we have in Waterloo are more expensive than your average bid?
No, they are, well, they, to a certain extent, yes. But they are what the city has chosen. This is what we're using throughout the city. So, um, again, in order for Public Works to maintain a, an inventory, they're only need to invent, keep inventory of one type of pole versus two, three, four, five, six poles. It's no different than what we do with our, our stormwater or sanitary lift stations. We specify one type of pump, so that Public or Sewer Department only has to maintain and manage one type of pump. It's much easier for the city to stock one inventory versus three, four, five.
Okay, so when this was, this was originally bid, we didn't have the light poles we have now?
We had generic light poles.
So we knew we were going to have to put those on there?
We knew we were going to want to change them, yes.
Okay, very good.
Any further discussion? All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith? Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes. All right. Um, we have a renewal, two renewals for Commissions Camryon Campbell to the Community Development Board and Lisa Munoz for the Human Rights, or either of you here this evening. Okay? And then we have, uh, to approve, we've approved the appointment of Aaron McClelland to the position of Assistant Police Chief, so congratulations, sir. And we welcome your continued service. All right. Let's go on to number one, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, uh, for the asbestos abatement services contract, AB dash 2025 dash 07 dash 09P.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Is there anybody who'd like to talk about asbestos abatement services? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Got to pause for a second. Forgot she's, just a second behind. Okay. All right, next.
Mr. Mayor Protem? I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes. Go ahead.
Uh, I move to receive, file, instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. And, uh, thank you. I couldn't see you, so, um, Madam Clerk, our bids. That's okay.
Yeah. Did you get my vote?
Yes, we, we got your, we got your vote, Ms. Creighton Smith. Okay, our engineer's estimate was $40,000. Our first bidder was All-Star Environmental LLC. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $41,772. Our second bidder was Site Services Incorporated of Algonah, Iowa. They provided 5% security, and their bid amount was $49,600. And our third and final bidder was Advanced Environmental Testing and Abatement Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security, and their bid amount was $34,940.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution approving award of bid to Advanced Environmental Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $34,940, in conjunction with the asbestos abatement services contract, AB 2025 07 09P, for properties located at 1712 East Fourth Street, 708 Mobile, Mobile Street, 127 Newell Street, 1, uh, 418 to 420 Cortlandt Street, 227 Ricker Street, 2, 2, 2, yeah, 2227 Ricker Street, 406 Randall Street, 718 West Second Street, and 411 Logan Avenue, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Counsel, questions? Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Bozen?
Sorry.
So I was just going to, uh, make the correction of 227 Ricker Street. There's no 2227.
2222. So it should be 227?
Correct.
Okay, so I was right when I said it.
Yep.
All righty. Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith? Okay. Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes. Number two, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to receive file proof publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the request by Cedar River Contractors on behalf of KW Electric for a site plan amendment for the construction of a 29, uh, 29,900, 29,900 manuf- square feet manufacturing warehouse in the office building located east of 180 Warp Drive.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any, um, anybody who would like to come speak to this? Sorry. All right, going a second time?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amendment to the ordinance number 5079 as amended. City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10 dash 4 dash 4, approving a site plan amendment request by Cedar River Contractors on behalf of KW Electric for the construction of a 29,900 square foot manufacturing warehouse in office building located east of 180 Warp Drive.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I motion to consider and pass for the first and second, for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith? Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, approve publication of this public hearing request by City Waterloo rezoner approximately 0.19 acres from C2 Commercial District to R3 Multiple Residential District to allow Iowa Habitat for Humanity to split two lots into three, but maintain a single zoning on the three lots located at 512 Almond Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there anybody that would like to discuss this item? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and the recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10 dash 4 dash 4, approving the request by the City Waterloo rezoner approximately 0.19 acres from C2 Commercial District to R3 Multiple Residential District to allow Iowa Habitat for Humanity to split two lots into three, but maintain a single zoning of the three lots located at 512 Almond Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel?
Mayor Protem?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Bozen. Go ahead.
Uh, I, I, I think this is, this is a, a really, uh, beneficial change in, in our ability to, to get that building tore down that's been there forever, that's just been an eyesore, and to get three houses in that, in that location. Habitat does a wonderful job in this community, and we should support them any way we can.
Absolutely. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a motion. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith? Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mr. Bozen.
Motion, consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith? Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes. Uh, can somebody read number four into the record, please?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
Um, I just want to read into the record that the, um, request, the public hearing, um, for the request by City Waterloo to vacate 20-foot drain easement on lots four and five of Warp Second Edition in the M dash two, um, P Planned Industrial District located at, at and adjacent to 4050 Levercy Road has been canceled.
Okay. Right. Thank you. All right. Onto the resolutions, one and two, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. Resolution, first is a resolution approving a permanent easement agreement in the amount of $10,184, and a temporary easement agreement in the amount of $790 in reimbursement for pavement removal in the amount of $6,628, totaling a just compensation amount of $17,602 with JP Management Corp. located at 1224 La Porte Road, in conjunction with the La Porte Road Phase II Reconstruction Project, Laporte Road in conjunction with the Laporte Road Phase II Reconstruction Project, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number two, a resolution approving a development agreement with Three Stooges LLC for the construction of an 8,200-square-foot commercial building, and construction of a future 8,200-square-foot building with a minimum assessed value of $1 million, with seven years at 50% tax rebates and land acquisition grant of $604,612.8 located south of 2661 Geraldine Road, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Have a second, please.
A second.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion, Mr. Dryer?
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street, please explain why we keep doing this. It's supposed to have a minimum assessed value of $1 million. We're gonna have over $600,000 in it. We don't get one bit of value out of it as far as a share of, of the businesses or whatever that's gonna go in there, and this does not help the taxpayer that much, because all of the rebates you're giving him and all the, for seven years, probably won't live that long. We gotta stop that crap, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Counsel?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bozen?
I'm, I'm against number two on the, on the purchasing of the lots, I, I think, I've always been not supportive of the purchasing of, where we come in and just buy the lots. Titty corner from there, not that far away, we've got all of that city lots that we own over there off of Warp Drive, and we give those away for a dollar because we own the land, but when we don't own the land, we're gonna buy the lot, give them the lots for a dollar, and, and then we're eating that expense. Two buildings, $500,000 each, I believe, I don't think they're a million dollars each. By the time, by the time we collect enough taxes to pay that back, it won't be in my lifetime. Like I say, we've got land at Warp Drive that, I think that that Midport Development TIF is taxed to be, as it is with our new international paper contract, you know, we're gonna be 12 to 17 million into that, depending on what that rail, rail spur is. We've got more roads and infrastructure to put in, you know, I sit on the Waterworks Board, the Waterworks has been contacted to, to pay for the water going into the, the additional infrastructure out, out there in that Warp Drive area, where the TIF has paid for it in the past because we're financially strapped on that TIF. We've got $400,000 in fencing coming out of there, we got $1.6 million in bill payments coming out of that, out of that TIF area to pay for the, the north crossing. I just think it's a, it's a bad policy, and I, I wish we would come up with something different, and I can't support it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bozen.
Mayor?
Mr. Simon?
Kind of along those same lines, I'm, I'm all in favor of new development, I think I've said it here before, and, and I'm, I'm a strong proponent of development, especially if it's creating jobs. This TIF sounds, from, from what Mr. Bozen just said, it sounds like this TIF is strapped. I'm all in favor of, of these buildings, but I, I'm not in favor of the large, long-term tax abatements that we're giving some of these people, and then the amount of money we're putting up front. Like I said, I wish there was a better place to do this, or I'd like to see the buildings maybe put somewhere else, but I, I, we just can't continue at this pace, so I'm, I'm a no, in the way it's written, I'm a yes for the development of the buildings, but I'm a no the way it's written, so, just wanted to share that, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Childs?
So I, I, I'm a little confused too about the grant amount, could that be clarified on why it's so high?
Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, so the City of Waterloo started a while back with three phases of Geraldine Road, which is the, the site that this is on, which is in, located within the East Unified TIF District. Since 2010, building the three phases of road there, we've actually had nine projects that have brought 11.05 million in new taxable value to the City of Waterloo, and we don't have a number on the jobs yet, but we're working to acquire that. One of the reasons that we work through these development agreements sometimes with our own land being sold for a dollar, which again, you have to remember, when we're selling land for a dollar, we have built the roads and the water and the sewer and the infrastructure and the gas and electric, so there's a lot of costs. In sites like this, we worked with the property owner, they dedicated the land to us for free for the road construction, and then they were responsible for putting in the gas, electric, water, sewer, all the other utilities that did not serve the road. So the cost is based on $4 a square foot, that's a pretty common price out there for development land, especially along highway systems, so essentially we are offering them the same deal as, as if we were giving the land for a dollar by buying it with the East Unified TIF money, we believe that the TIF is doing very well, actually with the amount of construction we're seeing out there and growing tax base, to be able to afford this.
So essentially what you're saying is that $604,000, $604,000 of work has been done on this property already?
They've had to put in all the infrastructure for the entire subdivision, yes.
Okay, and, okay, that, that makes more sense, 'cause that was the first, second confusion that I had, so minimum assessed value, is that for both buildings?
That is for both buildings. They would build the first building, and as soon as that one gets its CO, they will start construction on the second.
So they're both a million dollars each, or they?
No, it's a million total.
Well, it is a million total, do, do we know of, do we have potential company that wants to actually be in this building, do we have something coming into it?
We do not, this is Fishels Group, they have built small spec buildings like this before, Three on Martin, and of course they built some tall, some bigger ones on Levercy and a slightly bigger one on Levercy, and they filled them all, so we feel pretty confident working with them in, in the partnership.
Do you know how long it would take for them to start construction on the second building after completion of the first building, if they're able to find a tenant quickly?
Generally, this time of year, so it'll depend on if they get going before, the weather, are they starting in the spring, it'll probably take them about 12 to 14 months for the first building to be done, then they'll start on the second.
Okay, is there a way in these, in these council meetings, when we have a project that has some type of grant or something like this, could you explain where this money comes from in the front end, 'cause I think that would help me in particular, I mean, we've talked about this already in the past, but just knowing upfront, this is, was already been invested in that land, and this is why we're doing this, helps show why we're choosing to do something. Something you did say that I just wanted to clarify on, when you originally started talking about the infrastructure, you said, "We pay for that," that was just a mispoke.
The City of Waterloo was able to get rise funds for the road, Jamie can probably tell you, the road, when we get rise funds, those projects are DOT-led, and so we only build the road and a small storm sewer system for draining the road, so anything else above that for water, additional sewer, sanitary sewer, gas, all that other stuff is on the developer's costs.
Okay, and this TIF you say is healthy?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
Hey, Noel, I had, I had a question about performance, but you'd answered the first one, what is Three Stooges' performance on meeting the assessed value that they're shooting for when we do these type of?
So whenever we get a project like this, we basically take their building plans, we send them over to the county assessor, he says what he's going to put on them for taxes, and then of course everyone signs the agreement, so it's, it's going to be assessed at that minimum value. I would say, you know, over the last few years, a lot of the buildings that we've seen have gone up in value as, as building values in general in the community have increased, but we've had no problems with them meeting the minimum assessed value.
And then we talked, we had talked, you had mentioned about, you know, if when we give away the lot for a dollar, you know, we typically have a lot of infrastructure into it, of a lot this size, would, would it be reasonable to estimate that we would typically have put this amount of money into the development, is it less, where, how close?
We can definitely figure that up on a, like a linear foot basis or something like that, what, what it had, had to take to get to there, 'cause again, this was all just vacant land, and we started working on it, so there, there'd be quite a bit of cost with, with all the utilities there.
All right, thank you.
Noel, as I'm looking at the council communication, it talks about that the developer wouldn't, would only receive the property rebate after the second building, so if it takes 12 to 14 months for the first building, they would be paying 100% property tax?
That is correct.
While, while we're waiting for that second one.
That is correct, yeah, they'll probably have at least one or two years, if not another half a year there, where, before they'll be eligible for the rebate.
But we would have?
'Cause they won't get any rebates until they're at, at that million, minimum.
Okay, so then we would have the property taxes of essentially $500,000 for maybe a year or two.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, Mr. Bozen?
But property taxes that, that Mr. Foyce talked about are? In the, in the East Side Unified TIF?
That is correct.
So it's not gonna benefit the general fund, that's number one. Number two, we don't know that they've got $604 worth of infrastructure in there, those two lots are assessed right now at less than $2,000 a lot, because they're assessed ag. Now, if they're commercial lots, why are they assessed at agricultural taxes when they should be assessed at commercial lot taxes?
I'd have to go back and see when they were, that'd be a question for the assessor, I'd have to go back and see when they were exactly plotted, or if they're actively farming them, sometimes they can keep that ag value on there, that'd be a, be a, be a question for the assessor.
Good question, you know, I, I just, I, I struggle with it, because we're gonna, we're gonna pay and buy that lot for them, buy those two lots for them, and if, if, if the, the person that owns these lots decided to charge us a million dollars for, for the two lots, would we give them a million dollars to reimburse them for the two lots?
We've been pretty consistent with the $4 per square foot, I guess, basically throughout the, the commercial industrial areas that we've been working with.
And the reason I ask is because we're giving tax abatements to that, to that self-storage unit out on Marni, you know, like $1.2 million over the course of, of the project, because that's what they paid for the land, and I, I just, I just think it's a slippery slope, that's just my opinion, but I appreciate all of your information, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Ms. Creighton Smith, did you have anything? No, I just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything, Mr. Simon, go ahead.
So going back to what you had said earlier, do we know, I was trying to read this again as we're talking here, you, you had touched on something when you asked, I think when you answered Mr. Childs' question, do we know what the purpose of these buildings is going to be more specifically?
We do not, they are, they are spec industrial space, very similar to the ones built on, on Martin Road, just north of Ridgeway, if you want to see what they're gonna kind of look like, and those will all have basically small businesses in them, they're set up for either one or two businesses, depending upon the size of the business.
Okay, so there is a poss, there's a possibility that they will be employing people and, and providing a?
They are definitely set up to have employees there, they're not, they're not storage units.
They're not, they're not gonna be used by the, the person that's building them, then, they're, they're gonna build them, market them out, and try to get somebody to lease them from them, is that correct?
That is correct, that's what they do with all their other sites, yes.
Okay, thank you.
One final thing, these are not dissimilar from what we see in neighboring communities, correct, being built along Highway 20?
They're not what?
Dissimilar from what we're seeing being built along Highway 20 in neighboring communities.
That is correct.
These spec places, okay, thank you, all right, any further questions?
Madam Clerk, roll call?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes, on one, no on two.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith? Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes, three, four, and five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Childs?
I move to adopt the following resolutions, the resolution authorizing the sponsorship of high-quality tax shop credit application with the Iowa Economic Development Authority for International Paper Company for the addition of up to 72 jobs associated with their new business at 3230 Levercy Road, and rescind Resolution Number 2025-044 in its entirety, a resolution approving a development agreement with RAP LLC for the construction of a 4,200 square-foot commercial building with a minimum assessed value of $273,000 located south of 3135 Marni Avenue, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute that document, a resolution approving two memorandums of understanding with the Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments, the amount of $29,000 for the preparation of a grant, writing, and administration of the Economic Development Administration Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistant Grant for a water detention basin in the Waterloo Air and Rail Park, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute that document.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for resolutions three, four, and five, public comments?
Number three first.
Okay.
I understand when this first started going on, it was like 90 jobs, now we're down to 72, so we're giving them the same amount of money, 'cause I know there's been a couple council people that have stressed that we'd like to see the job figure come with the building figure and the money we give them. Number four, again, we're at the same situation, we're giving them $188,000 for a $273,000 value, buying it for a dollar, compensate the seller for the property value. This is a never-ending battle that nobody seems to want to do anything about, like stopping it, thank you.
Mr. Anderson, can you talk to us about number three and the change, please?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, so this is the state incentives for the job creation, obviously we're, we're aware of the job creation, but there's nothing specific in our development agreement for the number of jobs, but for the state incentives, we did sponsor that, honestly, I think it was just an error in, one of the questions on the, the state application is how many employees they have statewide, and how many businesses they have statewide for international paper, they were creating 90 jobs, they were actually creating 90 jobs statewide through all their facilities, originally the Waterloo portion was gonna be 65 of that total of 90, based on more recent data and what they're reapplying to the state for, working out some details, it'll be 72 new jobs in Waterloo, I believe the majority of the other remaining jobs of 18 would be in the Cedar Rapids area, which will have a direct relationship with supplying materials to the Waterloo location.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right, any further public comments? Counsel?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number four, I feel the same way about it as I did over there on Geraldine, $188,179, which wasn't listed on this resolution yet, you know, similar to the $614,000 that was listed on the last resolution, I mean, you gotta, you gotta go into it and find the fine print, but $273,000 of assessed value, the first $150,000 of that assessed value is gonna be taxed at the residential property rate, so now you got $123,000 taxed at the commercial property rate, at $188,000, and if you're paying $9,000 to $10,000 here in property taxes, we're not gonna see a positive cash flow to even coop that money in, in 18 years, and I just, I, I struggle with the, with this land purchase program that we have, thank you.
Thank you, any further council questions or discussion? Okay, all right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes, on three and five, no on four.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Was that a yes, Ms.? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes, on three and five, no on four.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes. Six, seven, and eight, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Number six, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a professional service agreement with AECOM of Waterloo, Iowa in conjunction with emergency building inspection. Emergency building inspection of the building at 325 West Park Avenue in Waterloo, Iowa, which had a portion of southeast wall collapsed in need of emergency building inspection to provide the city of Waterloo with recommendations for building rehabilitation or demolition of the existing structure in addition to a, and verify public safety. Number seven is adopting a resolution approving construction plans for grading, paving, and utilities serving the San Marnon Business Park, First Edition Phase Two, as submitted by Clapcell Garber Associates with the Sewage Treatment Plant Agreement, DNR Form 29, November 00, with the Department of Natural Resources and Final Acceptance of Construction Plans, subject to review with the exception of, acceptance by the Department of Natural Resources and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. And number eight is a resolution approving a supplemental agreement, number one, with a professional service agreements with both Infrastructure and Environment LLC, originally executed in March 17, 2025, and the amount not to exceed $541,131 in conjunction with the FY 2026 Kattowski Drive and Huntington Road Reconstruction Contract, number 1123, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Right. Excuse me, we have a motion and a second on six or eight. Counsel, or any discussion?
Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. On this survey for Huntington and the roundabouts up there, I think the citizens of Waterloo ought to have some idea of how much money you're planning on spending of city dollars for these roundabouts. The school has never said they're paying for them. You, you are just committing us to more and more dollars all the time. There appears to be nothing going to be done about the storm sewer runoff in that area. You are going to drown those people in that area. It's one of the wettest areas in the whole city of Waterloo. And now you're going to put roundabouts, more concrete, more water running off. There is no way for that water to get over that levee when it rains like it has lately unless you put in a gas-powered pump on the levee pumping it over because they plug it up. We are in a bathtub down there with the, and every time the creek comes up, the plug is down. There is not enough pumps to keep that pumped over. Already, it's running across Huntington Road, is taking the dirt and the silt across Huntington Road and down the waterway through the levee. We're sending her on down to Cedar Rapids, all that old clay that they got up there on the hill. If you go up and look at the site, you've got mountains of dirt. The neighbors are even calling it a mountain. Mountains of dirt and a hole back there that looks like they're, I don't know what it's going to be, but it's very, very deep. You need to go up and look at that construction outfit and see what's going on up there. And think about, you're going to flood that part of Waterloo. Make it totally worthless. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie, can you talk to, talk to us a little bit about the storm sewer runoff for this particular project, please?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. The easiest question to answer first. Two weeks ago, council approved an agreement with the Waterloo School District to pay for their portion. It's about a 60/40 split, give or take. The money for the reconstruction portion for the city is going to come out of local option dollars. Oh, let's see, currently, Kattowski is four lanes out there with the roundabouts. We're going to two lanes, so there should be a net decrease in paving. We're going to look at the storm sewer system, and that's part of what's in the agreement tonight with both, is to look at some of that stuff. Currently, and I've been, been here for 30 years, working on the flood control system, the storm sewer does come down there and it does dump out, it's the dead end of Scott Avenue into the levee. Mr. Dilavu is correct that when the Black Hawk Creek is up, we do have to shut this, the gate to close off to make sure storm water does not come back into the neighborhood. At that point, Waste Management goes out and sets up a number of gas-powered pumps to pump water over to the levee. As far as the mountain of dirt at the Kattowski or at the school site, they are in the process of digging their large detention basin, and they actually have several detention basins they are installing on their property. They are designed to meet the current city ordinance, which is to detain the amount of water between the five-year and 100-years. So they are going to have a large basin out there, and that's, that's the big one right there at the corner of Huntington and Kattowski. There'll be another one on the west side of the schools that will help with the drainage going into that neighborhood to the west over there. Did I get them all? I think so.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any other public comments? Counsel?
Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Bozen.
Mr. Knutson, can you tell us of this $541,131, how much the school's paying for?
Right now, again, it's, until we get into final design, it's about a 60/40 split for the schools.
60 school?
60 school.
But we don't have anything in writing that's a 60/40. This is just what you told us last week in this.
Correct. Again, it's based on the amount that is required for them to put in all the roundabouts and all of their stuff. Huntington, north of or up through Downing, and then east and west on Huntington as well.
I know there's a number of complaints of what's going on, and it had nothing to do with this, but what's going on on that road through Miriam's Park. It's like, I mean, it's like, it's like they're trying to put a road on a wetlands. They just keep digging and digging and digging. And, and it's, I mean, there's a mountain of dirt. They call it Mount Miriam now. There's that much dirt sitting there. And there's a lot of upset neighbors. And I, I hope we can, we can get to the bottom of what's going on there, too, because I know the neighborhood is, is really upset. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I can't, I can't answer that one. I have not, the schools have not reached out to me with discussing anything through Miriam's Park, so.
They just keep digging deeper, trying to find bedrock.
I'm guessing they've just, with all the rains, I'm guessing they're just trying to find something decent to stop so they can actually build on. That's my guess, but I haven't been out there to look at it.
I know. One thing, I couldn't see a track, I could just see the top of a track hole. That's deep.
And I'd have to look. There was some, I'd have to look, and don't hold me to this, but I think there was some water stuff, the water main that they were doing out there as well, or maybe it was the, their geothermal, the outlets that they're doing out there. So that could be it as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Simon.
Just two things. You had mentioned just now, you said, "We're looking at the runoff situation in the water." Isn't that something that should have been done before all this all started? I mean, what are we going to do if we find out we can't fix it? Are we just screwed?
I'm not, I'm.
So all this additional.
The, the water runoff coming from the school should be improved because they are going to have some very large basins out there that are going to hold the water and let it out slower than what it's running off their property now.
Okay.
So that's the whole idea. So that the same volume of water is still going to go through that neighborhood. It just goes through at a much slower or slower amount or a much lower amount at a slower pace. That's the whole idea of these basins is to hold it, let it out slowly so that the city storm sewer isn't overwhelmed. Now, there are portions on the north side of Huntington, be the northeast corner of Huntington and Kattowski, that is all privately owned. There is a big chunk of that that's, well, I shouldn't say privately owned. The school just bought it here not too long ago. Eventually, when they decide to develop that, they will have to install storm water detention basins to bring that into compliance with their, with the 100-year storm sewer development requirements. Currently, right now, it's, it's farm field. It's being far, actively farmed. So there isn't a whole lot that we can do about that.
So once again, I keep hearing estimates and abouts and nothing for sure. Whether you let the water out really fast or if you let it off really slow, it's still going to go to one place and it's going to, it's going to sit there unless it, I mean, no matter where you're retaining it to begin with, you're letting it out slow or if you're letting it out fast, it's still going to end up at the very bottom.
Correct. And at that point, when they're in it, and the only time that we need to pump it is when Black Hawk Creek is in flood stage.
Okay.
And, and we don't want the water to come back into the neighborhood, so we close the gate off at the levee. It's at that point, then, the sewer department goes out and sets up portable pumps to pump the water from the dry side to the wet side. Otherwise, the storm sewer gate is open all of the time.
Okay. So, and then the other thing, I keep hearing this school portion, city portion, and I still have never heard anything that's exactly what the percentages are. Is that, so, so when we vote on this stuff, we're voting on supposedly or possibly 60/40, but we don't know.
Correct.
So we're voting on something we don't even know.
Until I do final design and have the exact limits determined as far as how far back the roundabout has to go on Huntington, I can't give you an exact number. So I have to do the design in order to get an exact area that the school is going to be responsible for. But I, you know, I have to have that. So having the school agree upfront that they are going to pay for their percentage based on however far we have to go back to make the roundabout work, that there's, that their traffic study says we need to install, that's what I have to do. I, I can't, I'm kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. I can't give you, I can't give you a direct, a direct percentage until I have the design.
Yeah, it would be nice to have that. I, I mean, we, we continue to pass supplemental agreements and all these things for the school location that it's at, and it's all speculation. So I, I just want to express my concern that I don't, I don't understand how that is not part of the city's planning when we do a big venture like this. But that's just me. Thank you.
Any other counsel questions?
I don't have a question, Mr. Mayor Protem, but I have a quick comment. In, in this area, if we're having to bring, I've said this before, if we're having to bring out these pumps, I think we need to make the investment in having a permanent one over there. So I just want to say that on the record again, that I've said this in this area before, that if we're going, and I've been over there. The neighbors have called me over there during these, these raining sessions that have happened this summer, and I've seen what they're dealing with. This, from what I'm understanding, what the school is doing now should help with this problem, but it doesn't sound like it's going to alleviate it.
Mr. Knutson.
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. We have looked, excuse me, we have looked into the cost of a new lift station, canned lift station, basically meaning it's a giant pump. You come out, you dig a hole, I'm making it sound simplistic, but you dig, it's like a giant sump pump.
Yep.
For lack of a better term. It's about a half million dollars at least, and that's just for the equipment. For something that, and Mr. Bennett would be able to speak to this better than I can, for the number of times a year that they would go out and set up a portable pump, you can pay an awful lot of man-hours to take out a six-inch trash pump and set it up and run it for a few hours rather than investing half million or more dollars in a lift station that'll get used a couple times a year. It's a cost-benefit thing is what it comes down to.
Well, not to go back and forth. My reasoning is because then that prevents us from having to have the issues in the first place. Because then you don't have to worry about going out there to do the, do the work and get the, you don't have to worry about closing anything. It's just done in the beginning. So I just, I understand, yeah. It's a decision that we have to make. Is it worth paying that for that? I personally think it is, but it's up to the full council for something like that.
Thanks, Mr. Childs. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes, on six and seven, no on eight.
And Mr. Foyce.
Yes. Nine, 10, and 11, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the following, following resolution. The resolution approving a professional service agreement with Oakdale, Minnesota, in the amount of $9,500 in conjunction with the rental car quick turnaround facility concept development project and authorizing the Director of Aviation to execute that document. A resolution approving an agreement with Broutware Incorporated of Portland, Oregon, in the amount of $2,725.38 for 36 months in conjunction with the recollect software program and authorizing the mayor and city, mayor to execute that document. And a resolution approving the audit engagement letter with Bergen KDV for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, and authorizing the mayor to execute that document.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion going a second time? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
Just want to say I'm extremely in support of the work that Director Carrion is doing at the airport and looking forward to seeing, getting more people in our cars here in Waterloo.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
On number 10, can, can we get, how far along are we as far as getting, do we know how many people, if I can ask, how many people have signed up or are visiting the app or using the app? I just want to know what the effect of this at this point and how it's, how it's going.
Mr. Bennett?
Yeah, Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. So it, it varies as far as monthly, as far as how many people are actually using it. But today, when you look at between the web and as far as what is the app, we're at 76.3% people are using the app in comparison to the web. So that's actually good. So when we actually go to do the announcements as far as like, say, we have to change your collection date for a holiday or whatever, it's, it's making it better for us getting that communication out there. When it comes to individuals that just did like the print downloads, if they just wanted to know like the calendar, we had 848 of them so far this last calendar year, as far as who's printed that off. Active reminders and/or searches, it varies from one, from one month to the next. But we're averaging just under 3,000 active individuals going through the app looking for addresses of their collections and things like that. So the exact number I don't have because it's, it varies. But when we get the, the notifications, as of right now, active reminders, we're at 2,879. So that's where they, they chose to take the push notifications. But not everybody chooses to have that notification sent to them. So, but that's where we're at. We're always keep trying to push to get more individuals. We'd like to eventually have everybody, but you know, that's just going to take some time.
So are we still mailing the garbage pickups? We're still not, we're not mailing those?
Yep.
So that's completely shut off?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we have accommodated some that specifically wanted to, but we try to walk them through the site because you can actually just get it off of that. But, but we strongly discourage that. We want you to go through the app to do that.
And then did we do like a mailing to all of the customers to?
We don't do the mailing.
To get them to get more people on the app? Because if, if, if you said 800 and some, even 3,000, that's, that's a small percentage of the people of Waterloo compared to how many, how many mailers did we send out every year? How many people received the calendars?
Right around 11,000 is what we have.
Okay. So we're quite a long ways away from the 11,000 that we were.
For being just right into a year, yes. And I think some of it has to do with, depends on when your makeup days are, because it just kind of, it varies from one year to the next, just because it's always changing. So I think as you get the individuals to get in fact, impacted by that, and when we go to call and get more notifications. But I will get, here's like a positive note. For example, the fourth is last year, we didn't actually have to go back and rerun the entire route for that day in comparison to what we did last year, where we had to go run the, the route, just because I think we had more individuals that was in that area that realized to do that. So I think as, as the app's out longer and we get more individuals signed up, we're going to have better service.
I'm, I'm excited for it. I just, I'm just hoping that you could get more people to use it or that, you know, hopefully they don't need it. It's just regular, you know, your regular pickups. But I just, I just wanted a little update on that, and hopefully we can get more people to, to utilize it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Bozen.
And it's okay, Mr. Bennett. I, I do want to say that I, I use the app and, and I like it. And like when, when we had that excessive rain and the tree dump closed, I got a notification. When, when the high winds and the, and the dump is closed, I got a notification. If, if there, if the police, if there's a heavy police presence somewhere, you get a notification. Okay. So it, the system works, and I hope more people sign up for it.
I agree.
It's a great system. So, all right. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce.
Yes. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.